Good evening. We'll call to order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education, November 18th, 2020. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mrs. Bernsberg.
Here.
Mrs. Kirkowski.
Here.
Mr. Beckering.
Here.
Mrs. Cashman.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Gaseford.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here.
Resolve to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Okay, and for our attendees, there is a little chat or Q and A button at the bottom of the screen. If you'd like to put a comment in there, we can read it during one of the two opportunities to address the board. Resolve to accept the minutes of the November 4th, 2020, regular meeting as presented?
I'm moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? That brings us to our first opportunity to address the board, and there are no comments in there at this point. Like I said, there is another one coming up later in the meeting.
I just need Mr. Reynolds' vote on that last item.
That was a yes.
Thank you.
Resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2020-19 be waived, and that the action items dated November 18th, 2020 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Resolve that the reading of the Non-Certificated Personnel Memorandum 2020-19 be waived, and that the action items dated November 18th, 2020 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Grau, if I could just on your approval of the, this memorandum, Mr. Brad Heiser will become a new member of our Yellow Jacket family. Mr. Heiser is going to be joining our custodial team. He comes to us with, you know, roughly 25 years of, of experience in the constructing industry, reached out to many people who attested to the fact that he's a hardworking, dependable gentleman, so we are excited to welcome him aboard.
Great.
I'd like to welcome Brad, too. Actually, Brad was an employee of mine back probably about 15 years ago. So I worked with Brad for a couple of years, and he'll be, he'll be great. So he's a nice guy. He's a hard worker, and like, like was said, that he has a lot of experience in the building trade, so it'll be nice, it'll be handy. Not that we don't have that now, but his addition will, will give us, you know, some good resources as far as the building trades if need be.
Very good. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, brings us to the superintendent's report.
Well, just, just very quickly to touch base on the capital project, you know, Lisa and I are working with the construction management team just to really finalize numbers as we enter into the final stages of the project. And, you know, I know that our tile mosaic has arrived, just waiting for an opportunity for those folks to get into the building and, you know, not, not disrupt the day up in the high school. So we're working on scheduling that as well as the carpeting for the high school library. Our maintenance team, our custodians, have been going through the buildings with a fine-tooth comb to find areas where, you know, some scope work has not been completed, you know, little things so we can put together our own district facilitated punch list to provide to them. So, you know, that's what's going on there. If I may just add a little bit about the circumstances precipitating our decision to go to remote through at least Monday, November 30th. You know, we learned today that we did have a positive staff member in the middle school. He began experiencing some flu-like symptoms last night, fairly quick onset of symptoms, and ultimately tested positive today. He was in the, he was in work yesterday in the middle school. So there will be some extensive contact tracing that is taking place, not only among students, but the list of close contacts is a fairly long one in this middle school, albeit still 100% mask-wearing district. The Department of Health, you know, has and is deeming possibly 17 of our faculty and staff members in the middle school as close contacts. Ultimately will result in a 14-day quarantine, starting from the possible time and date of exposure, which would have been yesterday. On top of that, we had a positive in our community that affected several other faculty and staff members in another building. And also in the middle, middle school, there was a family member of one of our teachers that had tested positive, resulting in additional quarantining, which puts us along with some folks still in quarantine from greater planes in the mid to upper twenties in terms of faculty and staff in quarantine. When you take into consideration all of those things, we do not have the capacity to, to meet the demands of covering those classes in, you know, in several buildings. We were able to do some quick contact tracing of our own to work with Bosse's to make sure that our new visions, students, our career and technical education students, as well as our full-day Bosse students, could continue in their program at Bosse's. And so we're, we're happy that we can still have them attend there. I, my concern, you know, relative to these cases and the timing that tests are, confirmatory tests are taking, you know, for me, there was no other recourse than to put us in full remote, at least during this time period. You know, I, I know we had another staff member develop symptoms today. That staff member, I believe, was receiving a PCR test, you know, which is not a rapid test today at 4:00 PM. So that could be three to five days before we hear the results of, of that test. So, you know, there were a lot of things affecting different buildings that impacted this decision today. So, you know, I, like you and everyone else in our district, just hope that, you know, all those who are impacted by COVID remain healthy, that they don't turn positive, and those that are, you know, recover quickly and fully. So those are the circumstances under which the decision to go fully remote, at least through November 30th. You know, as I expressed in my letter to families, this is a fluid situation, just like it has been since March. We're going to monitor and continue to monitor it very closely as we have since March. And, you know, if this situation evolves into something that warrants an extension to that remote learning period, I will certainly reach out to our families and our faculty and staff and school community and share that with them. I'm hoping not, but, you know, we will, we'll have to wait and see, you know, how things go in, in the near future. If I could just add, the governor's micro cluster plan is a bit concerning to me, not only to me, but to other school districts, especially in this region of New York State. Under his plan, if the Oneonta City School District was designated as a yellow zone, that would require us to randomly test 20% of our faculty, staff, and students. So upwards of 300 people would have to be randomly selected. We can perform those tests over the course of two weeks. But the process is tricky, and a lot is involved, and you know, as, as an educational institution, you know, making the transition to a healthcare facility would be difficult. It's not a question of will, it's really a question of capacity. If we would need to, you know, reach out to our district physician, and who would need to order the tests for us? The state would provide the test to the Department of Health, the Department of Health would then deliver the test to us. They do not have the capacity to help us test students. Neither does our healthcare community in Oneonta. So testing would fall completely on our nurses or other trained staff members in our district. The machines that we would get to process these tests would process four tests per hour. So we are talking about, you know, a major time investment, and during that time, our nurses would be strictly devoted to testing, which would make it difficult for them to tend to the needs of students in person. We would then become responsible for all of the contact tracing. We're not, not all of it, but a good majority of it, and reporting to the Department of Health. But we would have to report our findings to the state. It is still unclear about our role in mandating tests upon faculty, staff, and students. I have learned that if a student refuses to take the test or is uncomfortable taking the test, we have to presume that he or she is COVID positive and send that student home for 14 days. It's, it's not a good plan, and, you know, I know now that the state has walked that back a little bit and said, you can perform all of those tests in a two-week period upon designation. If your results fall under the region's positive infectious positivity rates, we would not have to test anymore, but that initial testing is going to prove extremely problematic for us. We will continue to work with the Department of Health. But if we are in that position, it may be very difficult for us to maintain our hybrid schedule. I just wanted to share that because it is, it is a concern, so. Other than that, I have, I really don't have anything more for you.
Okay. Any questions?
Sean, you're muted.
Tom, who's paying for that machine to do the testing? We are, or is the state providing that, or is the county health department?
The, the state's providing the equipment and the tests.
Okay.
There there is, there will be costs incurred by this district to conduct the tests. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a list of things that the district takes on the responsibility for, and it's a fairly lengthy one.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tom, would we be open to hiring like a consultant nurse to come in and help with the test? That's licensed?
We, we could, yeah, but we would, you know, this would have to be across all five buildings, so we would have to, you know, try and coordinate that. My concern is that even if we have a faculty member who refuses, you know, my understanding as it is right now is we also have to presume that he or she is guilty and send them home as well. You know, in, in a, you know, in a time where, you know, there are all sorts of limitations to what our nurses can do, even with fixing a Band-Aid onto a student due to concerns relative to adhesive. There is, there's a liability issue here that is still questionable. So, you know, right now, I, basically what I'm saying is I'm concerned. Hopefully there'll be some further direction from, from legal, but really just wanted to put it on your radar now that, that, that this is a major concern, not only for me, but for many school districts, even those districts that have school-based health systems. So. You know, I'm
All right, sorry.
When the state Go ahead.
I just had a, a quick question about the, the yellow zone. If, if we did, you know, our district did enter into a yellow zone or become a yellow zone, and we decided to close, would it just be like for a two-week period, or is it until we're fully out of the yellow zone?
It, it would be until we're out of the yellow zone. But I mean, if you think about, you know, some of the things that we'd have to do, we would have to establish, you know, a New York State Health Commerce account. We would have to apply for a CLIA, which is a Clinical Laboratory Improvement Amendment waiver, which legally allows us to examine students, faculty, and staff. We would have to ensure that our medical director is in support of this process because it's his or her license that is going to be used to order the tests. You know, we have to make sure that we have this, the staffing to conduct the testing. We would have to train our nurses and other staff members to conduct these tests. We would need to establish, establish clinical testing facilities in our buildings so that we can conduct these tests under those standards, along with providing all involved with personal protective equipment. We would then need to, to establish our own protocols for follow-up and patient notification and data reporting. We'd have to secure an agreement with the lab, this is where costs come in. We'd have to secure an agreement with the lab to process these tests. We would also have to daily report these tests to the state. And we have to understand that this district then becomes medically responsible for all of this stuff, for the testing, for the protocols, for the reporting. It's a lot to ask schools. You know, the equivalent of that is asking, you know, is us asking, you know, the, the State Department of Health to, you know, help us administer regions exams, grade them, and, you know, report all those findings. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big endeavor for schools to take on.
You know, back when the, the state sent their, their SWAT team and established three rapid testing sites in the city of Oneonta, those were all staffed by local healthcare workers. So there was some capacity somewhere, and that was, you know, when there was a high need here.
Right. Well, you know, we continue to have conversations with the health department. You know, right now, we, and not only us, but, you know, all component districts in this Bosse's, you know, are wondering if we would have the capacity to do this. Again, it's not a question of will, but just the capacity. So more to come. Hopefully we won't become yellow, but yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Tom, is there a, a way to do any of this stuff in advance, under the assumption we're going to have to do it anyway?
In advance of the yellow? No, there's not, unfortunately. You know, the other thing is if we were in remote during that period, you know, I need to know if we would also be able to have our faculty, well, our personnel, you know, work from our buildings, or would that 20% then be 20% of all of those folks? So, you know, there's just a lot of questions, you know, I, I don't disagree, you know, with the attempt, you know, the unfortunate reality is, you know, as we all know, testing is, is a timing thing. So, you know, even with this, if we're randomly testing, you know, 20% of asymptomatic faculty, staff, and students, which they would all be, because you can't come into our buildings, you know, if you're symptomatic. You know, if we randomly select the, the wrong faculty, staff, and students, you know, we could, you know, be missing those asymptomatic, you know, folks as, as well. It's, it's, it's a flawed system, but I, I just wanted to share it with you to let you know that it is definitely a conversation that continues to be had with our health department. And we'll, we'll just see, we'll see what happens.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. Resolve that the reading of the Financial Memorandum 2020-20 dated November 18th, 2020 be waived, and that the financial action items be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm struggling a little bit with the computer tonight. There's a lot of delays, so hopefully I'm on at the right time. There's really not a lot on the financial memorandum. The only things that I'd like to point out are the donation from the Oneonta Clothing Guild, and they're very generous to our buildings. Each year they donate to each building. Two of our buildings did have some money left over from before, so that's why you only see two buildings on there. But if, you know, all of them needed it, the Clothing Guild would donate to all of them. They're very generous to our school. And then the MOU with Job Corps. We are an approved site, and we have approved staffing to administer the task testing. And then they pay us to do that. Unfortunately, now we're not doing the testing for them, but if it does open up and, and we are allowed to provide that testing again, this allows us to do that for them. And then there's some excess textbooks. So a pretty short one tonight.
All right, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Bye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. And seen no comments, we'll move to roundtable. And start with Sue.
Oh, I get to go first. I really don't have anything, though. I have no committee reports. But, and I think, I feel like every meeting we have to say this, but I'm really happy and, and proud of how our district, Tom, and the administrative staff and the teachers are handling this roller coaster that I'm sure that you feel that you're on. I know that I feel that way with my job, so I have to imagine that you guys do, but just that I can't speak for everyone, but, but I'm sure that I do, that we really appreciate everything that you're doing. That's all I have.
All right, Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. I'll, I'll echo those sentiments, Sue, too. It's just, you know, goes without saying. We're learning on the fly here. We've got all these plans, and we've had to now implement them, and, and, but there's a lot of things that are still variables that we don't know, and we will be still learning on the fly, so just kudos to Tom and everybody. It's just, it's may they be, may you live in interesting times? We certainly are, right? We did have finance yesterday, and, and Bill and Amy, if you're going to chip in, chip in too there if you want if I miss anything, but we briefly talked about, most of the grants are in, we talked about tax collection. In some ways, maybe surprising, 94% of the, our district's taxpayers did pay their taxes on, on time. So there's only 6% outstanding that the county would make its hole on, and as a city school district, they could divide that over two years. But I think, Bill, you mentioned you talked to somebody, and it sounds like we're at this juncture anyway, still planning on being made whole in, in the current year, so that would be good from cash flow perspective. We talked about health insurance, and there's some research being done on a, a new plan there that that Lisa's kind enough to put a, a one-pager together for us there, I guess, as, as things are reviewed. Potential to save us, you know, mid-six figures. Believe it or not, so we'll see how that materializes, and we talked about fund balance. Same thing, kind of a, always a moving target, but ever more so this year as we wonder what our revenues might end up being and where we could end up. So that'll be something that we'll kind of monitor, and then a one-pager for that kind of two, I think, will be helpful for others that aren't as directly, you know, intimate with it, to, to follow where our fund balance is and can be, depending on the extra variables we have on the revenue side this year. And other than that, you know, it, it is November, and the, not that we don't look at the budget on a ongoing basis, but it's the time of year where the, we start to develop our budget, get some of our, our numbers like TRS, 10%, we kind of know that, kind of one of the first ones we, we do because it's a five-year average that gets inputted to us. And we briefly mentioned, we have a couple of contracts that are coming up within two units this year. So I think that was the basics of our, of our meeting, and that is what I have to report on.
Sean?
No committee meetings, unfortunately, but looking forward to the day we can get back to those. Congratulations to Mr. Heiser and his employment with the district. Obviously, if he worked for Darren, then he obviously is a good worker, and then he come with some good words. So again, congratulations, Brad, on your, your hire. And Sue, you're right, I mean, we're all saying the same thing that about the whole COVID, and, and everybody's concerned about the education portion, but our administration is second to none. Tommy, you worked so hard on this, and I can see it on your face that it takes a toll. It takes a toll on not only you, but everybody else, but we're getting through this. And yes, it's frustrating, but it's not, it's not anything we can control right now, but just, obviously, we're controlling ourselves with our, our personal protection, but as a district, when I got the call today that, or the email, and it's just, I kind of shook my head, but I had to sit back and say, it is the right thing to do, because granted, we've only got two days tomorrow and Friday, and then two days next week, so it's really four days, and then we get that break. But what's going to happen during that break? It is fearful. It scares a lot of us, and as much as we want to be with our families and friends during the vacation Thanksgiving time, we may have to think twice about it, but I don't know, I don't want to get too deep into it because it just gets, it gets frustrating, because I know we start here, we get here, and obviously we get thrown backwards. And then after hearing what you had to say, Tom, about the, all the testing with the 20%, it just, my, I'm just getting fueled by the fact that all the costs, the inconvenience, and ultimately, who suffers with this thing? It, it's the students. And watching these kids online every single day, what they do is, it's not where we want them to be, but right now, we don't have any choices. So I'll leave it at that, and as, again, Tommy, thank you for your hard work and your administration, your staff. You guys are doing a wonderful job, and keep up the good work.
Cash?
I'd rather not follow Sean next time, Bill, so just put that in your little notebook. So echo everyone's sentiments. I, um, Um, so echo everyone's sentiments. I um, so I, I do want to actually um, give a shout out to Colleen, um, because I know that you and your group worked really hard over the summertime to get the all of the teachers prepared for this um, academic year and I, it's made a big difference, um, sitting here with my children every day. So I just want to thank you for everything that you did. You're up here in this corner for me, so. I just want to thank you because it really, I know it was a lot of work for you and everyone on your committee, so thanks for that. Um, and uh, committee wise, I know Bill and I haven't gotten together. I, I did rework the letter. And um, I don't know if you had a chance to, I just finally got a chance to do it today, but I did rework the letter. Um, I don't know if you want to share it, let everyone look at it now, or just send it out. I don't know how you work that part of it. Um, I also signed up today for the second webinar of the three-part series on um, racism. So this one is institutional racism, raising awareness and meeting the needs of all students. Uh, so this one is basically exploring the definition of institutional racism and discussing how implicit bias impacts the learning environment. So um, that's on December second, from twelve to one thirty. If anyone else is interested, I can always, you should get that too, but I went to the first one and I think Sue, you did too, right? Yeah, so that one was really good. And I think that's about it. I still have to work on the Google form though.
Okay. Um, Sean, you know, you, you mentioned um, people being together or not and I, I think you know, we're at that point now where we just have to, you know, stay in our own, our own pods for a while and um, I know it's hard, but you know, getting together at Thanksgiving or getting together at Christmas really is not going to help anything. Um, and, and it may, it may be nice for that day and and you know, the next day, but after that, you know, two weeks later, I, we could be seeing what we're seeing now. I, you know, I, I don't want to draw any conclusions here, but we are just about two weeks after Halloween. You know, and, and um, you know, I raised a question to Tom, do we, do we need to adjust our code of conduct? Uh, much like the college did, that here's our expectation for your behavior out of school, that you're not going to go to parties and that you're not going to do these things. Um, you know, I, I, I hate to do things that we can't enforce, so, so obviously that's not what we want to do, but um, you know, it's, it's, it raises the question, we, we have to set the expectation somewhere that A, our students are not doing things they shouldn't be, but also our families, because it does impact. And if you look at, at why we're going to remote learning, it's not because we have a whole bunch of people sick, it's because we had a whole bunch of people just exposed. And we can't cover the classes and, you know, and fortunately, hopefully, we don't get a whole bunch of people sick, but but it, it's just a reality that we're in, that if, if they were sick and we did continue to be in person, we would spread it even more. So, you know, I think it's hard and I know people don't want to do it, but you need to wear masks. Now, you need to socially distance and, and you know, maybe by next uh, June, there'll be enough vaccine for all of us and, and you know, we can kind of move on a little bit, but I think it's going to be later than that too, so we, we just have to be patient and do the right things. Um, I want to end with uh, just happy birthday to Jamie and Tom. And I know we mentioned it before we went live, but I want to put that out there too, so. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personnel.
Did everybody speak?
I think we needed Darren for roundtable.
Did I miss Darren?
Darren and Amy.
No, I thought I got Amy.
I take.
All right. Wow.
Amy, Darren, I take the first one.
And I were going to uh, so moved in second.
Okay, I was, I was just supposed to say in so moved, so moved.
I think this is, we're going to call this the Butterman, Butterman rule.
Can I take up too much time again? Sorry.
Well, I, I don't really have anything new. I, I completely and totally agree with everything that everyone said. I mean, obviously we, we want our kids in school, but the health and safety of our, our, our students, our faculty, our staff and our families and our school community is our number one, uh, our number one thing, so. We do want kids in school, but if we, if we run into these roadblocks, the best thing to do is just kind of go uh, remote. And so I, I agree with, with what everyone says. I mean, it's not what we want, but it's what's necessary. Um, and I kind of thought about maybe Tom considering putting together some type of a district, my dogs are barking right now. Uh, maybe a district communication reminding our school community about maybe their adherence to the Department of Health's guidelines during the, you know, the, the Thanksgiving holiday and, and just maybe reminding our school community that, you know, if, if people cross too many lines, then it could bring, you know, a lot more positive cases back into our school community, so there, I don't know, I thought maybe you might consider maybe doing a, you know, district communication.
It, it's already typed, Darren.
Okay, good, that's all I have.
Amy?
Well, I can't possibly add to that. I, you know, echo everyone's sentiments. Um, I commend our teachers and our students for their ability to roll with it. Um, and just keep, keep on keeping on. Um, so I'm very appreciative of that. And yeah, uh, Darren makes a great point. This is bigger than ourselves and our own families' personal needs and we have to look out for each other, so you know, whatever people do with that, that's, you know, for them to consider and decide. Uh, I do have a, we did commit as a communications committee tonight at five o'clock, um, and we talked about parent square and now that it's uh, fully functional. We are currently, it is running concurrent with School Messenger right now and probably over the next six months. Uh, we'll transition to just uh, parent square, since everyone is using it, uh, to get to communicate their health in the morning and um, and we're like, looking for ways that we can enhance that and make that our primary source of information for parents, students and faculty. That's all I have.
So now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for special ed and personnel. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Extentions, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.